Parking for the...
Well, that's gonna be tougher because we don't have a kiosk in the area. So, it would probably be for employees, uh, public employees, uh, you know, uh, business employees. I don't know how we can necessarily do it with a kiosk. It'd be nice, but it's, it's too much of an expense for one year.
No, you're right, you're right. So, that's why we're at the front. We don't really need it for this year.
Correct. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I didn't want anybody to think I, if I left an opportunity out there. So, I told him I would talk to him tomorrow to get the council view on this. Uh, and, uh, so the answer is you don't really need it this summer.
Well, we're gonna wait to see what the chief's meet, how the chief's meeting goes tomorrow. He'll let us know either way.
And then I'll tell him, uh, let him know the one Thursday. I'll give him an extra day. And, uh, in addition to that, there, I'm putting together the spreadsheet. Mike and I are working on it, uh, to give you, as a result of our five-year, um, capital program, uh, you'll have it for your next workshop. Um, we have funding for, that exists, uh, for current, a number of the current projects, and we're gonna project it over five years. And we, we do have a question about the Striker, um, chairlift, and Jack, maybe you wanna speak to that?
Yes, uh, the Striker submitted a proposal for the Kowalisk stretcher and the, uh, Lucas chest impressionist. And, uh, we have, uh, I asked our, our medical doctor, director, just pivot us on his opinion. We did that. Uh, we sent out a copy of the, uh, of the letter he sent. He was very much in favor of it. Uh, the JIF is very much in favor of it. They cite the fact that statistically, one in four first aid responders, uh, ends up being injured to the extent that they no longer work as a first aid responder. Back injuries are the biggest worry. So, then JIF is, uh, concerned those, those, every one of those ends up as a, uh, insurance claim. And just at the last council meeting, then at the last council meeting, the last JIF meeting, uh, there were two claims, uh, for, uh, just those type of injuries from lifting uh, stretches on patients.
And are you able to support those, too, Frank?
Yes, uh, Mike Fashion, and most of you know Mike, uh, is a major participant in the county water first aid system. And the fifty-eight first aid squads in the county, he worked with them. And he, uh, again, he has spoken to members of the council. He's, uh, again, strongly in favor of this equipment. The, uh, major, the major other factor is it reduces the likelihood of an injury to a patient. If you're trying to move patients around with manual stretcher, there's a lot of extra lifting, twisting, turning, and you have patients who are in pain, with injuries, uh, that are suffering breathing problems, that's another factor. So, of both the patients and first aid responders, these two pieces of equipment are good. The other factor with the chest impressionist, the Lucas, once that's attached to the person's chest, it's, it's locked in, if you will. And then, while you're taking that patient to the hospital, the emergency room, all the way there in the ambulance, this chest impressionist is working. So, he maintains blood circulation, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's another area of future growth for this team. So, again, those are the, uh, the overview of it. And I don't have any questions or anything.
And, and, and Jack, just to add to that, you, you, I guess, uh, Councilman Booker, Beaver, and, and Jack and I, as the finance of Met with Mike, and we talked about, uh, funding for that. So, that's not in this year's budget, but that is in capital. Uh, we had placed aside funds for that and the, um, repaying and modifications to the old burrow, um, complex. Um, so, so it's not in the budget, but we have the funding for it. That's just my, uh, added to that.
Just a question, and I ask it every time the subject comes up. Where do we stand on the action we committed to take to look at alternative strategies on EMS going forward? We said we would not approve this until we completed that assessment.
The, the basic point is this. Our first aid squad is one-hundred percent volunteer. All of the other options that I've looked into, and I've worked with Highlands and Atlantic Islands, worked with Non-Beach, Johnsons, if you're going to go into and redefine assistance, minimum is five days a week, eight AM, four PM, that sort of thing. No one is talking about twenty-four seven. But all of those agreements are expensive. In fact, uh, the organization providing services, the Highlands and Atlantic Islands, is finding that even the money they're receiving is not adequate, and they are not interested in coming to Seabright or adding Seabright through. The other factor when you go with these services, they charge the individual that's being taken to the hospital. And the number gets up into the high hundreds, seven, eight hundred, nine hundred dollars. So, we have a satisfactory first aid service now that is volunteer one-hundred percent. They have approximately twenty-five, twenty-eight members. Uh, the leadership of the, of the squad is working diligently to put together a good program long-term. And this I refer here to, uh, you have the units of Chad Murphy. He did the same thing with the fire department, and he took over. Fire department was in difficult situations, but working over several years, he now has a, uh, typical act of Chad and Joe. We now have a well-functioning fire department. And the same set is in the process with the first aid squad.
Okay, so, so let me react to it and say, um, first of all, the concern I have with the stretcher is, we found out during the demonstration, a stretcher cannot be brought into the house. Let me just finish that. Which, in my opinion, is the most critical time for difficulty in moving somebody around. It operates outside the house, but the patient has to be brought out. The second thing is, in my discussions with people on EMS, they describe those things as nice-to-have, not must-have. So, that, that is the input that I got. And then the last thing I'll say, and I'll say it again, as at the prior meeting, we said that we would come back with a set of reviews of alternatives before we made a final decision for a hundred thousand dollars that we did not have allocation budget. You did take the action to come back and do that. It sounds like you've done some of that work, and you had the information, which I very much respect, but I think it would be good for the mayor and council if that trade-off was put on a piece of paper before we make a hundred thousand dollar decision.
The question on the ambulance or the stretcher, if you're in a ranch house, that house, I told him that it's only one or two, or most three steps, that ambulance, the stretcher can be brought in. If you're talking about high rises and kind of that, standard elevators can accommodate a stretcher. So, if you're talking about a two-story, three-story house, no stretcher, then we brought up a normal in-house stair. And what we do have is a chair stair. And if you're willing, if you like, we'd happen to give you a demo on, but they strap the person into the chair, and then it has a mechanism where it goes down, down the stairs smoothly, and under control, and once outside, then they load into the stretcher. I just wanted to note a comment. The most difficult aspect of taking people to the hospital is loading them into the ambulance, and securing them in the ambulance, and then at the hospital, taking them out of the ambulance. The, the stretcher we have now is manual, so that requires a great deal of lifting and twisting and turning. Getting in, keeping it in place, and then at the emergency room, removing it. And we've had comments from some of the people working at the first, at the hospitals in the area that, and they said this to our first aid group, "You guys, why don't you have the new stretchers?" Because they see the struggle that you're having of getting people out. And the more you have to struggle moving people, physically moving people, and the more exacerbation you can cause. But, and then I asked the, uh, the chief, Anthony Tope, just to verify, are his members strongly in favor of this? And they are, and they're signing a, uh, a, a letter for that effect as well. But, again, the statistics, one in four first aid responders ends up having to drop out of the work because of a back injury or shoulder injury. You can't continue to do. We're having now, uh, several young ladies doing, and they're modeling the lift, normal size, and same with myself. If somebody is laying on the floor and they weigh two-hundred-and-fifty pounds, asking two people to lift them up to a manual stretcher is, that's a strength. And with the new stretcher we got, we put right then into the ground level, and it's a much easier process loading them in, and then lift it up, and it's a running out process. And you saw when she did the demo, one person working and modeling this new stretcher can load it right into the ambulance by himself. So, again, I, these are two things that will enhance significantly the quality of service we can provide to our residents.
Okay. Just, just one last comment. Um, you know, you gave the example of high rises with elevators. We don't have those. And we, and we don't, we really don't have any ranches, but just about every house is raised in the town. So, probably ninety-five percent of the houses in the town are exactly the kind of houses that you're saying this does not work well in. And the only thing I would say other than that, Jack, is I would leave it to the rest of the council members to make up their mind about it. I just will even follow through on what we said we were gonna do.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, if I, um, I just wanna offer a couple of comments here. Um, you know, if I, in fact, you know, a few months back, uh, a question from the leadership in EMS, if, if they provide, um, you know, a, a written justification from Chief himself as to why they felt they needed this. Um, so, I know, uh, everybody mentioned that some of the ships have said some different things, this is not only the right, right? I wanted to be on the record as to what the leadership was requesting. And, and, and that, that was the problem, you know, the council, uh, you know, a couple of fringes passed or whatever. Uh, because I, I, I wanted to see, you know, those who were using it, what their opinion was on this, based off, you know, was, was, uh, you know, uh, useful for them. So, I mean, after that, maybe specifically what folks need. What I would also say is that while the, the expense is, is significant for a conference license, it certainly is, which is blocking, we, we, we haven't been racing. We've had our conversations about it, and that looks good. Uh, I think, uh, the fact that our, our CFO, uh, Lou himself, has had a long history in this kind of work, uh, has, has indicated that financially, it is something that we can do. It's not the budget, we understand that, uh, and that, and that is something certainly to consider. And thinking that, uh, when you look at it from a risk management perspective, uh, one, one claim with a hundred grand is more like a penny's. So, that, that's what we have, we have, you know, thank you, it's a great for a quarter. Uh, but, we, part of that, we have to balance, you know, we have to balance fiscal responsibility and immediate stores of, of Jack's payers' money. We have to balance that with providing a service that, in a safe way, both those who volunteer to do this, and the vision that they serve. Uh, so, like, my, my view on this is that while it's, it's a significant amount, but I'm in support of it because I'm somebody who's ever experienced, and all of the tables one thing a little wrong, and a hundred grand, you've got zero now, times five. So, 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 it's something that's true. Um, that's my perspective, and I just want to offer that, the benefit of the process.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Yeah, I would support it, but I think it's a good idea overall. Any other comments or anything, or questions to get?
Well, I guess since the finance committee met with CFO, right, and if this was on the table, was there talk about what we would take out of the budget to put this in the budget, to make it correct?
I'm sorry, uh, Councilwoman, I, I didn't hear you get the question?
Yeah, the question is if, if, if there's, how do we make room in the budget for this? Did, did Mike have to remove anything, or did he suggest removing anything?
No, uh, it's out of the capital expenditure that we got. We, we decided to use that hundred-and-thirty or so thousand dollars on the renovation and getting of the, the old burrow and all, and then a certain amount for the Striker, uh, left. So, it's not in the budget, it's in, it's in a capital fund.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other questions, guys? All right, thanks, Jack. Uh, CTO, do you have anything else for capital?
Well, I, I don't know that I have a resolution to this question right now. Um, I think Jack is asking for us to approve the, the, the purchase of this. It doesn't affect the budget, it does spend a hundred thousand dollars out of a capital ordinance. So, I, I think kind of we need to make a decision from it.
Yeah, fair enough, Jeff. I know, I guess right now it sounds like Jeff, Jack and I are in favor of it. How much of what else wants to send their thoughts, what they think?
The number we're working on right now is eighty-seven thousand.
In the last cycle, for roughly ten years?
Uh, it's been ten years.
Can they be greased, maybe sell them? If you were to move forward and find a shared service agreement, would we be able to resell them?
My understanding is yes. They say, uh, included in that is a four-year, um, the company comes in and maintains it every year for four years, they have to have changes, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's, it's in tough condition. It's, it would be a sell.
Well, you have to get more, or would you do?
Well, you don't have to, but, uh, some of those companies show one, three, ten years, but we're, we're going with just one.
Just one.
But, uh, other plans have gone one, three, nine.
All right, thanks, man. Joe, we only got a, got a minute left, so, yeah, we have a consensus, I think, unless, hello? Yeah, Sam's okay with it, so I think we're good to go.
I have nothing left. We can move on, other than capital, there's a couple of quick items we can do. Chief and, uh, Fire Chief, can, can give us a quick update?
All right, who, let's see, uh, right, ridiculous. He came off.
Hi, everybody. I know you guys have been here all, for a while. Three-hundred-and-eighty-seven calls for service last month. We were pretty busy. Lots of normal stuff, DWIs, warrants, stolen vehicles coming through town, stalking stolen vehicles, so the normal stuff that we've had, the domestics and everything else, um, we're just doing, we, we've definitely been busy at the police department. A lot of stuff we've been doing now, getting ready for parking, checking all the signs. We were supposed to start sweeping this morning. Sweepers, who was broke? I don't know when it's gonna be back in service.
There's no, you didn't sweep.
Oh, yeah, okay, that was a nixlet out, but not gonna nixlet out. Um, I do have a meeting with Mike, talking about the parking lot, but that's my biggest concern. Um, I know last week, Jack was in with Joe and met seven new police officers. Can't believe it, we got seven.
That's great, this is special.
We have five class ones, two permanents. So, the two permanents will be on the schedule, uh, probably in the middle of the day weekend. It's gonna take a time to train them. We have the five coming out here, take a lot to train them, too, so I'm very happy to have them. It was just like a load, but they're not ready yet, though, so we lost some time, but we did meet them and all. Nice kids, Joe met them all, right?
They were, were.
Yeah, they were great. Um, and that's it, we're just gearing everything up, and we've been busy at the police department.
Chief, any progress on the clerk still?
We have been looking, but I wanna focus more on my road people first, because that's just, it, that's such a time-consuming training mission right there. I'll find someone to clerk, that's gonna be not so hard to find, I don't think. It's the road people that I'm worried about the most. That's my biggest concern, is really out there, typically out there.
Did they not hear that Peyton spoke to the eighth of May?
We did, we were, well, it was postponed, so that's Monday, right?
Uh, it's postponed, he said the eighth of May. I, I just spoke to Fury a few days ago.
Yeah.
For me.
Yeah, we'll let you know, we'll put phones out and that kind of stuff, and that's it. And you guys have been here for a while, so I'm not gonna say too much. If you'd like to, any questions?
We've got a check of three-thirty-seven, nothing, you know, some of the calls.
Yeah, it's a lot of calls, it's just everybody that's in March, correct?
Oh.
Yeah, I have them all listed out, and it's a lot, and it's gonna be picking up, so.
Thanks, Chief, Fred.
Thank you.
All right, Far Chief, Chad, you've got an opinion there?
Yeah, thirty seconds. All right, uh, year-to-date, ninety-four calls for service, that's, we're up from eighty-three last year. Um, it just, I had that feeling it's gonna be one of those seasons this year. Um, tonight on the resolution, or on the agenda, you'll see the resolution for our seasonal members. I think there was ten on there that actually finished through the process. I have three more that, that haven't finished the process yet, but more than likely will by the next council meeting. Our scheduled training with them, we have pushed it back a week because of the fair, is, uh, May nineteenth through twenty-first. It's a three-day in-house training program. We're all certified firefighters, but we, we make them go through a three-day program with us to, to learn the way we do things here. In addition to that, we, we scheduled our joint training with Ocean Rescue. Um, they're, Don's paying for a, an independent consultant, who's actually buddies with Mike Hudson, specializes in swift water, um, May sixth, May seventh, to do the area in and around the bridge. Um, so, we're, we're teaming up with Ocean Rescue, so that weekend will be in the river by the bridge. Couple fires, but they're all out of town. I'm sure you saw them or something.
Just think about the many and the firemen's there, so we're gonna get compressed into what we gotta do, make sure Dave knows what that's happening.
Yep, yep. Charlie's doing the fair, if you have any questions for the South Fair, as I said, I stayed out of it, I got yelled at once, I don't touch fair.
The fire, I've never seen a call, but you have seasonal members, seasonal?
What's that?
There's ten. Are they in category of seasonal?
The seasonal, for now, yeah. At, at the end of the season, they, they elected, they want to stay or not, they submit a letter if they wanna continue on.
This one issue, we had that with nine people swimming from Seabright Bridge north, and, uh, no boat or anything.
That's part of Charlie Rooney's crew.
Is that right?
Yeah, yeah. We actually had an incident with one of them last year, uh, he had a medical episode.
That's what I was concerned.
Right by your house, actually.
Yeah, there were nine of them.
No, they're all, they're all professional athletes. They wear the, they wear the boots. A couple of guys have the, the floats attached to their, their ankles.
I was sure there was a boat or something, they were all themselves.
No, no, those are just professional swimmers, they, they do it every year. They're actually out there all the time, so.
Thanks, Chief. Great. Um, Joe, you wanna hit, uh, four, should we, uh, we're gonna have to start the council meeting pretty soon, we carried the rest of you out, is it?
I have the number four.
I'm sorry, uh, oh, number four, I said, I'm sorry, number three, you wanna do one more, Joe, or you wanna go right to the council meeting?
Well, let's cover some of these. Uh, Mayor, what is number three again? I'm sorry?
That's the, the platform for Beach Street.
Uh, we were recommending that employers do it, they did the first two. Uh, it's on the agenda for the regular meeting to approve their contract. Uh, they did the other two, but they're, they're, they're just experienced with it, and hopefully we can get it at least started by Memorial Day.
Yeah, sounds good, Joe. That'd be the fifth of five. The other two, we had the five we're gonna do, two are covered by the River Project Development, two we completed already, this is the remainder.
Correct.
Um, okay. So, do we, what do you think, Joe? Should we, you think we should, uh, carry everything to a, a future meeting, or should we, because the council meeting should have started five minutes ago, so what's your suggestion on that?
Well, you to Chris. Chris, do you wanna move on to the regular council meeting, so you can have the minutes done directly?
Um, yeah, I suppose, but we can, we can do the last, a couple of these really quick, they're just a mention.
Okay.
Like CRS rating renewal, we finally got the official letter that we, um, are back at the same level of the CRS program, saving our residents' home insurance, you can thank Mary Tanglex and Karen for that, they spent a lot of blood, sweat, and tears doing that done. Um, there's a guy, a student, um, that wants to put free surf wax up at a spot on the river pond in a little box, it's a school project, if you're all prepared for that, I have a resolution, we can throw down tonight. Um, and, I'll leave it alone.
The county, uh, a mom had called me and asked if you would like them to pursue, uh, potentially purchasing property in North Beach near our public access for additional parking for beach access. Um, they will not condemn any property as part of the county recreation program. Uh, I know that, uh, Councilman Beavers called to, to the county, um, uh, park system. Uh, what do we think about that? Uh, they would like our feedback on that, whether we would like them to pursue that, uh, purchasing voluntarily public property in North Beach for beach access.
Mayor, can I say a couple of things on this? So, real quickly, I was approached by Mike Harmon, who's a member of the Monmouth County Public Park Systems, stating the fact that the county is interested in looking at properties in Seabright to potentially put some sort of public park. Their approach would be, and I'm not for or against this personally, uh, their approach would be to purchase property, whether it be public or private, uh, own the property, effectively maintain the property, and create a space for people in Seabright and people from out of Seabright to use it. He described this ideal condition, that the county would be something that reaches from as close to the river to the ocean as possible, that's why he purchased it in North Beach. He just wanted to know whether or not we, the town as a governing body, would be interested in entertaining discussions around that possibility, where in his opinion, it could be a win-win. And in him talking with me, I suggested we discuss it with Joe, which obviously somebody from the county did, uh, to determine whether or not we had interest in this. It would be a beautification activity, it may be a private property that's sold, but it's something that they're approaching us about whether or not we're interested in. That's my form of all of the area.
Yeah, I, I think it's good, I like the idea it's voluntary, like it's not gonna be an interdepartmental thing, not gonna be bad, so, uh, private property owners are basically, yeah, I think it's not, only is a bad idea, the only thing is we might have more swimmers or unguarded beaches, but.
Well, that would be, I think you'd wanna do a long-term, you'd wanna take it for a break, I mean, it would become the North Beach monitor, you know, access point, I don't know how that would work.
Yeah, I think there's, there's a lot of considerations here.
Yeah.
There's pros and cons, and I think all they wanna know is, will we monitor it until we do a discussion about it?
Yeah, I think you got it, yeah.
I don't think it's a bad idea. I think North Beach is already the same way it is with the park across the street. Uh, I would say, however, you would know, move private areas, you just park them on the, the property, that would be, I would, I would say, what's in both of the brackets, because how would you even be able to?
I would compliment those of people that live in North Beach first, well, I should say it, I don't know, but it's, see what they think about having national parks up there, having this spot.
This town.
Yeah, or county, yeah.
Yeah. Any other thoughts?
I'm negative on it myself.
Okay.
I just think Sandy Hook is right there, and that provides outstanding access for people on both the river and the ocean. My concern is, fully out on the ocean edge, that porting area, I'm surprised we haven't had more accidents. So, I would, unless they have some spectacular program, I'm, I'm more worried now.
I met Mr. Hopper at, at, uh, Sea Life Activity that was down in Olmstead, and he explained what he wanted to do as well. He, he'd like they, anywhere in the, in the Seabright to do the development, it sounded like something, we, we at least listened to what his plan was.
Okay. Okay. Evan, what do you think?
I'm having a conversation, I want one second, yes, here.
All right, so we have a lukewarm, we can have a conversation.
Well, then, I don't know what committee that would be, but I would be happy to bring the park service to come and sit with us.
I think maybe, I would think Beach, maybe, right?
Probably Beach. I would try to coordinate it with them in the county.
All right, sounds good, all right, thanks, Joe. All right, so in, I spoke with Earl, and he's going to, he'll speak to number four and five during the council meeting, during the public board council committees. Is that it for, so we have the upcoming resolutions refer, extremely upcoming, they're going to be talked about in like fifteen minutes, right? So would anyone make a motion to adjourn this workshop?
Is anybody ever feeling about that surf wax?
Yeah, yeah, it's a good idea.
Is it?
I didn't know, I didn't know they had this too, with like three second.
It's just that, like you, you know, like a public library, little box, where it's shared, it's very similar to that, where you just put wax for, if you don't need it, you just grab it, same idea.
Okay.
But it's a nice, very.
Nice gesture. All right, good deal, anyone else make a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second, all favor? All right, workshop is adjourned, we're going to go, including what they can put in a second break, and right into the, right into the council meeting?
Watch it.
All right. All right, let's see, Chris, have a difficult poll, same poll.
Is there a phone ready?
Yeah, I guess so, sure. So we're going to go right into our, we're going to schedule council meeting, so we'll get started with our pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is not called for order, in line with the Department of Seabright's non-standing public sector development and the implement of the Public Meetings Act, I wish to advise you that adding to the vote to this regular physical meeting is sent to the other department press in another location for the January tenth, twenty twenty-three, and you choose the date, time, and location of this meeting provided in the notice. This meeting is open for public. Roll call, Councilmembers Bieber?
Here.
Booker? Jeff, you online? Is he online, can you hear?
He's on there still, like.
All right, so Jeff Sears can't just keep this. Catwana?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Killer? Not here.
Here.
Mayor, please, here. All right, first up, we will start with our remarks to the audience, if there's anybody online or a person that you've heard, please state your name and address, and you've got three minutes to address and go right back. Anybody online, anyone who heard this tonight? All right, so just going on to a quick proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, April of twenty twenty-three, just want to add to the agenda to acknowledge that, and there is the actual proclamation, you can read through if you'd like, but we just wanted to highlight that. We're going to go on to the consent agenda, would anyone else make a motion to approve the items on this consent agenda?
Some move.
Councilmembers Bieber?
Yes.
Booker? Catwana?
I just have one question, the resolution for the surf wax, if that can be put on, where that at?
Oh, we can, we can add it, can we? All right, we already made the, let's see.
Can we just provide that motion, or?
Sure.
That's the resolution, that resolution eighty-one.
Well, actually, it would be eighty-three.
Eighty-three. So we, resolution eighty-three will be authorizing the surf wax standard, the rubber wax, that I added to the consent agenda.
So anyone can make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of resolution eighty-three, twenty twenty-three? Some move, wax. All right, thanks. All right, councilmembers Bieber?
Yes.
Booker? Catwana?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Killer?
Yes.
And on.
Yes.
All right, so the consent agenda was approved, including the addition of resolution eighty-three, twenty twenty-three. All right, moving on to bond ordinance, five twenty twenty-three bond ordinance, providing an appropriation of two hundred and three thousand dollars for various sort of improvements forwarded by the Department of Seabright County in Monmouth, New Jersey, authorizing issues of fifty-three thousand, two hundred and forty dollars bond or notes of the borough for financing part of the appropriation. Would anybody else make a motion to introduce bond ordinance five twenty twenty? Second?
Second.
All right, councilmember Bieber?
Yes.
Booker? Anyone make that thing?
He's on, he's still.
All right, we'll go to Catwana?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Killer?
Yes.
And on.
Yes.
All right, bond ordinance five twenty twenty-three has been introduced. We're going to move on to individual action under new business, vouchers in the amount of hundred seventy-four thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. Councilor, please make a motion to approve this voucher list.
Some move.
All right, councilmembers Bieber?
Yes.
Catwana?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Killer?
Yes.
And on. All right, the voucher list has been approved. All right, we're going on to the twenty twenty-three municipal budget. Budget comments from the mayor and council. Let's see, anybody, I guess before we move to the, what, resolution, do you want to add any comments for anybody, is that the, my best for I?
I just had a one thing, the doctor, I'm sorry, for state support, for having, they had a boat ride on the next second. And the doctor would like to see if the mayor and council would be there at four thirty, four o'clock. Would like to make a big thing about the boat rides, put in papers and stuff, and develop some, as you have, but they're open next second, at four thirty. Again, there's just the publicity for Seabright, and per se, broker.
Mayor, just a comment from you, Earl, quickly, we had several public sessions that we did a comprehensive review of the budget. I know Jeff is not, and I am on the finance committee, and I, as Jeff would normally do, want to thank all the departments for all their hard work in getting things in line, I think it's an excellent example of collaboration, being good stewards of the taxpayers' funds, and a special thank you to Mike Bass for once again fantastic job in getting us a very comprehensive and effective motion, thank you.
Thanks, Earl. Any other comments or questions for anybody? I think it's Mike on the phone, okay. Yeah, you guys good? All right, so I guess we have a resolution eight twenty twenty-three, authorizing the voucher to be right on title. Would anyone else make a motion to approve resolution eighty-one twenty twenty?
So, we'll, sorry.
All right, councilmembers Bieber?
Yes.
Catwana?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Killer?
Yes.
And on.
Yes.
All right, we approve resolution eighty-one twenty twenty-three. Onto public hearing twenty twenty-three municipal budget. Would anyone else make a motion to open the public hearing on the twenty twenty-three municipal?
Sorry.
All right, councilmembers Bieber?
Yes.
Catwana?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Killer?
Yes.
And on.
Yes.
All right, is there anybody else to be heard regarding the twenty twenty-three municipal budget? Is anybody online?
See, I can be, Chris, if you want.
All right, would anyone else make a motion to close the public hearing on the twenty twenty-three municipal budget?
Sorry.
All right, councilmembers Bieber?
Yes.
Catwana?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Killer?
Yes.
And on.
Yes.
The public hearing's been closed. Would anyone else make a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-three municipal budget, resolution S, resolution eighty-two twenty twenty?
Some move.
Second.
All right, councilmembers Bieber?
Yes.
Catwana?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Killer?
Yes.
And on.
Yes.
All right, we approve resolution twenty eighty-two twenty twenty-three. Okay, we're on to mayor and council comments, and I know Earl's going to have quite a bit to say, because some of your ideas have carried over, so we're going to kick it off.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that, Mayor, thank you. The first subject is on public space ordinance enforcement, I gave a copy of the summary for everybody up on the day, especially folks online or in the room. About a month or so ago, Mayor Kelly asked a small group to take a look at public space ordinance enforcement, particularly around smoking in public spaces, alcohol consumption, and dog violations. So we convened a small group of people to go through that, Evan was on the team, Joe Rooney was on the team, Brett was on the team, Jim was on the team, Don Klein was on the team, and myself. And we kicked it off by asking three basic questions, the first question was what is the enforcement level in the past? So we have an understanding of where we've been previously. The second question is, is there significant enough of an issue around these topics in order to increase our enforcement? And the third question was, if we decide an additional enforcement to these areas, how can we best achieve that? So we went off and we looked at that, the chief was kind enough to bring back the summary of prior work, and there has been an intent to enforce a limited enforcement specifically around those three areas in the past, and it was predominantly driven by the limitation of resources on both the part of the police department, as well as the beach management team, and Don provided input on that. The team works very hard to try to enforce these things, they're spread kind of thin, and hopefully one of the things with the additional police force that we're going to have this year and going forward, we can up some of these enforcement opportunities. So what we did is, the group felt also that the issue was significant enough that we should try to take steps to increase our enforcement in public spaces, and as a result of that, we looked at a series of recommendations that we put down and wanted to bring forward to the council for consideration. And the suggestion was we either consider all of these or the total of them to address the enforcement issue around those three topics. Summarizing the items that we identified, first of all, we wanted to make sure that we had adequate signage in place to cover these ordinances, because without them, it's very difficult for us to enforce. So we said we do a survey of what's out there, and determine if we're lacking in any way on signage, that we would look to put that in place. The second one, Don committed to this, was to assign a deputy manager, a trained deputy manager, to deal with specific ordinance issues on the beach and in public spaces. We were predominantly talking about the parking lot, the seawall, and the beach areas. Don has that in his plans for this year, going forward to his beach team. We look for the police department to increase patrols, particularly in public areas, with a focus on the wall, because the seawall, because if the police are there, they can both peruse what's happening in the parking lot. On the seawall, we can also respond to things happening on the beach. So we discussed that with Brett and Jim, and they felt they could do that to a greater level this coming year. The fourth item we talked about was conducting a communication blitz, where we would look to, in the first several weeks during the summer, increase communication and focus around this, so people know that we are elevating our attention to this going forward. And we can do that in a number of different ways. Item number five here was to add public notification on the digital sign, and put additional information on our website, if we're increasing our focus upon it, we want our visitors and our residents to be aware of it. Going forward, what we said, we would monitor response to this, basically see how it goes, and as needed, adjust appropriately to that police department and beach team during the year. And then, as always, as the case at the end of the year, we would review the number of incidents, citation for the issue, and develop any changes or best practices or recommendations going forward next year. So the team walked away comfortable with that, we felt it was comprehensive, it would show that it was serious about increasing the enforcement in this space, and recommend that as the path going forward. So the way I would leave that is, number one, ask if anybody on the council has any questions about those recommendations, do they have any other areas of suggested enforcement, of things that we could do in addition to those? And then lastly, get concurrence of the mayor and council if they're in support of this set of recommendations to ask the beach and the police department and our municipal team to support that after going forward. So that's item number one, Mayor. Any questions?
I had one on the seawall aspect.
The police department will put their primary focus along the seawall, so that they could respond to things going on in the parking lot, on the seawall, or in support of the beach team, if they have any people violating the ordinance.
So they, in the center of town, I got you.
That would be where the focus is, where most of the congestion is.
Any other questions?
You're comfortable with that? Okay, Mayor, you want to go on to the second?
Yeah, keep going.
Okay, this second one's a little more difficult, and some of you will remember that a couple of meetings ago, we had some residents come in and talk about the challenges with resident permit parking. Obviously, a challenging issue in the town, because we don't have sufficient space. But what we wanted to do is take a look at it and make a determination of the situation, and also understand potential actions going forward. So once again, we put a team together, but it was kind enough to support this one as well, including walking every parking spot, every house in the downtown area where our primary problem is. But the major issue that we found is insufficient parking, obviously to meet the residents' needs. And in addition to doing the work with the team, we also talked to several residents, and their primary complaints were around two areas. Number one, they felt that illegal parkers, and the police department has worked quite aggressively to deal with that in downtown, but it still remains a challenge, uses up some of the spots, the limited number of spots, and makes it difficult for the residents to park in their designated areas. The second item that they identified was, and this is the residents speaking, they're only allocated two passes per household, and in some cases, they feel they need more than that. Obviously, if you issue more than that, it doesn't fix the problem, because there's a limited number of parking spaces. So we wanted to look at it holistically, and it was interesting, because you learn something every time that we do an exercise like this. First of all, residents showing proof of address can get two per household unless there's expanding where your circumstances. If there's a nurse that has to come to the house, or if there's special access needs or disabilities, in very few cases are more than two issued per household. Last year, we issued four hundred and sixty-four spots, that passes. And what's interesting is, if you count the number of spots versus the number of houses, it comes pretty close to about two per. So it shows you that the available spots, based on the number of households and permits, are pretty close to imbalance, which means as soon as you do something with that balance, it kicks it off that people can't effectively park in those spaces. Illegal parkers, commercial traffic where people are working in houses, so how do you deal with a situation like that? So it looks like that is about imbalance, the number that are available, but nonetheless remains a problem. Now, interestingly enough, many of the homes in the downtown area have raised their houses. You would normally think that that provides additional parking, because they'll have one to two spots underneath the house. A very large percentage of the people use their garages for storage and don't put their cars in it, that's a pretty common thing. So it doesn't necessarily result in additional parking spots when people elevate their houses. The other thing we noticed is, there's an uneven demand and supply based on specific streets, not all streets are the same. Some have parking only on one side, some have it on both sides, some have a lot of cutouts, so obviously, it's not a one-size-fits-all. And in talking with the chief, hundreds of tickets were literally given out last year for illegal resident parking, so it has been a focus area for the police department to try to get the situation under control. So we identified a couple of relief valves or areas that the residents could deal with this problem. Number one, and I suspect they know this, there's three twenty-four-hour day parking in the public lots from September fifteenth to May fifteenth. So if you can't find a spot on the block, you can always park on the public lot during the off-season time. It's a little bit of a war, but it's a parking spot. The second thing is, all year long, you can park overnight from nine AM to nine AM at no charge, which your car has to be out of the parking lot by nine AM. So that's another bit of a challenge for people, but it does make spots available. The other thing that the chief and I talked about, and this was something a lot of residents didn't know, is if they park in their own cutout, their own driveway, and they hang a permit on their window, they will not be ticketed when they park in their own driveway. So a lot of people assume they can't do that. So in talking with the chief, he said, if somebody is parking in a cutout, a driveway, they have a pass hanging there, it's incumbent on the owner of the house to call if that's not their car. If they don't call, the police are not going to ticket it. So there is an interesting way that people can actually pick up additional spots, because a lot of people felt if they park in their own driveway, even with a pass, they could potentially get a ticket. So that's something we want to communicate, because if you park in your own driveway with a permit pass, it's not going to be ticketed unless a homeowner calls. Yeah.
You're parking on the street in the driveway, or what?
Blocking driveway, yes.
Yes, blocking driveway.
Yeah, blocking your own driveway. Effectively. Okay, so there were some additional steps that we looked at to possibly improve the situation, and this is literally trying to fit five pounds into a four-pound bag, right? There's no easy solutions here. But number one, and we've talked about this, and I think that the police department's going to do this, increase the enforcement of illegal parking to maintain as many spots as you can for residents. That's gotta be number one. We also know that illegal parking on the side streets now is a hundred and twenty-five dollars this year instead of fifty, which was last year. So we're hoping that by the increased value of the ticket, it's going to help curb, communication's going to get out there, if you park illegally on those streets and there are signs up to say it, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollar ticket, not the fifty that it used to be, where some people would just park and say four to fifty dollars. We found a spot on Poppin' Drive Lane, where it looks like there's four to six spots, they're not presently designated for resident parking. Now, this is a short. Now, this is a short-term issue because Poppage Lane is going to get folded into the whole Denos project, the Haven project, and affect what happens there. But in the interim, the possibility exists that four to six additional spots can be used to help the downtown area. One of the other things that's going to happen is the Haven project, the Riverfront project, is going to have fifteen public parking spots. They're responsible for the parking of their own residents, but fifteen public parking spots. The intention of those is to attract public people coming to the walkway along the river, the dog run, the fish cleaning station, the kayak launch. We could consider designating some of those fifteen spots for resident parking not in the Haven project. That is a way of freeing up, pick the number, two, four, six, eight, whatever it is, to relieve some of the problem, potential of downtown. Downtown, there's a hundred and sixteen houses and two hundred and thirty-seven parking spots. That's exactly in balance, which means there's no excess. So anything we can do to actually improve that situation would be helpful. We checked around a couple of recommendations, which I would not necessarily suggest, but just to, to consider the possible. Allocate public spots to a limited number of residents in the public lot. Don't think that's a great idea because the average spot generates sixteen hundred dollars a year in revenue. So every spot that we would give up, give up ten of them, that's sixteen thousand dollars worth of parking revenue we lose. That is a way of doing it if you're on a parkland, but not necessarily someone, someone would recommend. So the last thing in here is several of the residents said, really what I need is I need a third pass. Well, maybe you get a third pass, but it doesn't fix the problem or we have insufficient parking. So I wouldn't recommend it, we would not recommend that as a problem, as a solution, because it wouldn't solve it. So mayor, I think we've looked at this, we've exhausted it about as much as we can at this point in time. The bottom line is there's no easy solution. You said this at the first meeting. We're limited in space, but we should focus on increased enforcement and wherever we can, adding additional spots or that negatively impacting the town. Questions?
Hello? Well, thanks for working on it. Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, we, over time, add a few spots. It is good that they park behind their driveways and, uh, yeah, they have a visiting call to get a ticket. Because that, that way in downtown, it does help, everybody does it, definitely, but it's good to clear it up. But, no, thanks for all the research, thanks chief for all the work on it. And, uh, Ed? You're fine?
Hey, just walk in.
Yeah, there you go. All right, very cool, thanks. Any others, are you done with your dip? It's time to go.
All right, anybody else want to speak to their committees?
I can go. All right. Um, I'm going to wait to ask all of our council members. We have a lovely fire minister coming up. And we've got some booths that we need to manage and we need staff for. So volunteers are greatly appreciated. Um, I'm going to, I created a giant Chinese link. Um, and so we're going to start sending them around and, um, which I posted on the website. And then maybe we can get a little message out on the, the back-up sign to look for town volunteers who want to help manage booths. So we want to get a head start on that so we don't come the weekend before and are trying to find people to man five-hour shifts, even though it's a lot of fun. But we want to get a head of game on that.
Can you remind me the dates on a three?
The eleventh through the fourteenth.
Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, yeah. Joey, you remember the last year, it's a bowl.
Yeah, it's, it's fun. So the more vol, obviously, the more volunteers we get, the shorter shifts we can make. But we just kind of want to have a running group of people. And it would be great for some of us to kind of, you know, kind of.
Games available all four days.
Excellent.
Um, thanks.
Thursday night. Yeah, five, five to eleven, I think, or twelve?
Five, ten, five to eleven, yeah. That will, will host the times.
Yeah.
When it gets a little.
Yeah, but we wanted to start doing volunteers and kind of spreading that news. So if you know anyone in town, maybe you could bring someone to do the booth with you, and then it's, it's fun.
If you're not, out of town.
Out of town's great, too. Um, but that's, it's a nice sense of community. The more people we get, um, that are supporting the Fire Minister. And now, all the proceeds from the booth goes to the rec center. So last year, we generated four thousand dollar revenue from the management booths. So there's, um, there's that, you know, additional dollars for the rec center. Um, also, we are looking to, um, submit a grant. And I'll touch base with, um, Jeff, but, um, John's wife said through a great opportunity for a national fitness grant. It's this really cool kind of fitness court outside. And we want to submit a grant and maybe look at the, the Shuferi, the River Park in time. So it could become a space where we got like outdoor gyms or courts that could be utilized, especially once the, the bridge gets done. There's going to be a lot of work that needs to be done with the Riverfront Park. So we want to take a look and submit that grant for the future. Uh, there was also a local.
What was that, what, how do you envision what we're doing there?
Uh, I can send, or I can show you, um, what the program is. It's, um, it's kind of a, you know, you can see some fitness machines that are used outside.
Okay.
It's kind of like a, a course that's all about, um, outdoor fitness. And so it would be a nice addition to not just having, the park is great with all the benches to, to go hook up, but it's also an opportunity for additional space to have people outside just enjoying the space. So we'll, we'll see where we can go with that grant. Um, also, there's a, last year, there was a local recreation improvement grant that, um, some neighboring towns have received about seventy thousand dollars in grants. So we want to keep our eye on that one. We've been worried to see if they're going to offer it next year, this year currently, and then get prepared for that. Because that would have been a, a great opportunity. So we just want to keep our eyes on a couple of grants for the year.
That's good.
We've got it, cheers.
All right, Jen, your next.
Okay. Cub Scouts, final February, Saturday, April twenty-two, eight-thirty in the morning, near cars, car rentals. Um, I'll meet them over there and, you know, get them squared away. But they, they had a good outing last year. They're expecting a hundred kids, a participant in that little thing. And they've flung it, and they have a Facebook page for the Cub Scouts that people look. This is the area winners, so they won at their local pack, and this is the next level of the Monmouth camp.
Looks like they're getting some.
Saturday, this Saturday. Um, I, I don't know if we, sorry, did we get the stonewall grant? Did we get something?
We got fifteen thousand dollars.
Fifteen thousand dollars stonewall.
Just for a climb.
Just for a climb. And if we submit everything else, there's another ten thousand available for stonewall. So Jill has a copy of that, I believe, and will, he, he initiated the original. I did mention the repayment moved to May eighth. Um, we're working on the checkouts. Um, they've got a new proposal from a different contractor, uh, but Jill and I should still try to reach out to the smaller person. On behalf of putting the foot showers out by the, um, rec center, um, when I was removing the sand from that wall, there were two troughs that said water. I was like, wow, flat out water, that's really the thing. But they're just cabinets, they plumb up the PVC, then it was prepared for, we had one electrical water on the beach, right? But while the New Jersey Department of Water was there, I asked them, what would it take? And he said, he could put a meter right near Dominus in that corner, and then we could run water to the staircase and put a trough there for water rather than on that building, which doesn't like water. It's only, it didn't like water. Uh, it's a minimal fee for the meter a month. It's seasonal, so you shut it off at the end of the year. And, uh, we would have to just spin in line on how long does it take to do a meter? And then he said, you take it from the meter to where you want it, and that's where there's no additional cost. And, uh, they could run right along the wall, just trench it out and put a pipe, blow it out in the winter. They're going to come and take the meter anyway at the end of the season. So it's an option to, you know, the home wash is out of the way. Great. And I did mention to the dog before the other day, that was something else, but, um, I think that would be a good solution. It won't bring any sand over to where we don't want it, and you could properly administer it. So that, I think that would be a really good thing. Uh, just for whatever, I, I did post, we have some openings in public works for the summer. Well, I posted them on Facebook yesterday. Rob indicated we got two candidates right now, so we had none, right? So we have a lot of work to get done between now and Memorial Day, and, uh, we could use a couple.
That's two, two ordinance?
No, we have one and two ordinance, but we have two candidates.
Oh, okay.
So we'll, we'll see how that goes. We, we did lose our, Robert, who used to take care of the, you know, cleaning services and stuff. So I asked public works to, uh, make sure that the towel and the old bedrooms are checked over there until we figure out an ending.
What did he, he?
Keep retiring.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Tell them, tell them. I'm sorry.
That's it. Thanks, Jen. Any rest of you?
Okay. Um, yeah, I have the foot washers. I look at both models. One that was going to go up on the seawall in Monmouth is going to shoot out of the overall hall. So it sounds like we could go back there to, for example. Um, our beach camera got swarmed. It was down for the last few days, but, um, that's back to working again. We'll go there. Um, it was eighty-five degrees on Friday. We got slammed at the beach for the first time, if you were around this weekend. Um, that was a little taste of summertime.
Yeah.
Um, right now, we got fully staffed heading into the season. Um, accepted, um, contracts for pilots and for interns for the project. And we have four hundred and twenty-five thousand in revenue updated.
Very cool. That's good. Thanks, Jen. Got anything?
No, I, I mentioned, I put it in the wrong place, I'm sorry. I mentioned the, uh, the photo with the, yeah.
I think our word services, we hosted, uh, I think Fire, Police, we hosted a bunch of, uh, TruGo Girl Scouts today.
We had the Girl Scouts come today.
I heard from the mom in charge, she's been happy, of course, they said we're great.
They're welcome anytime, everything. It wa, it was just perfect. It couldn't have been any more perfect for the girls. Everybody was there.
Yeah.
It was, it was great today. And I don't know why more troops don't come, but it's perfect.
Which is true.
It was, it was a brumson.
Brumson.
Yeah, Ruxa came over, why didn't you put a brumson out? Now I think it was more of a fantasy ride. But it worked, you just worked out great.
Hands and shoulders.
Yeah, it was just, it was a good experience. We appreciate it.[1733.96]